Good evening. This meeting is a hybrid. The council is back on the dais and the public will be joining via Zoom. The mayor will be joining via telecommunication. The chamber is currently closed to the public with the exception of special presentations and public communications. For the invocation tonight, we have Pastor Seth McKenna from the Bridge Church. Is Pastor McKenna available on Zoom?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me and very thankful that I get to be a part of this. Let's stand and let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for this incredible community and what you are doing here in the city of El Segundo. Lord, I pray tonight for favor and wisdom as we conduct this meeting. And Lord, thank you that your hand is upon our town, upon our police, upon our firefighters, our teachers. Lord, thank you that you are leading and guiding this amazing council and our leader, Mayor Drew Boils. Lord, thank you that today there is going to be wisdom as we conduct this meeting. And Lord, we look forward to the good things that are to come in this town and as we are moving along in such a difficult season of life. So, Lord, pray for blessing over everybody. Pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Drew?
Here.
Councilmember Nicole?
Here.
Councilmember Pierstuck?
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Here.
And Mayor Boils?
Here.
All right, we are all here. We have special presentations. Our first item, our recognition of Supervisor Han, has been canceled for tonight for availability. We'll move on to the L.A. Hyperion Treatment Plant Wastewater Spill and Recovery Update. Mr. Minnick, is Elias Sassoon available?
He is. He will do it virtually from his office.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. I reached out to Hyperion and AQMD, but they could not be here tonight. So, I have hopefully the information and I'd be glad to answer any question as I can. So, the status of the air monitoring system, the permanent system on the Hyperion fence, according to AQMD, they are continuing to work closely with Hyperion to expedite this process. It is in the works. They have received the proposal from a third vendor. According to AQMD, they are very qualified to do this kind of work. So, that is being analyzed at this time. They have been at the site and they are working very closely with Hyperion and Hyperion is working closely with AQMD. That's as much as I know. So, it's going to take a while before that is formalized and the design gets underway. With respect to the reimbursements, a total of 3,250 have applied for reimbursements. 2,600 documents have been received. The deadline that has been set by Hyperion is October the 8th, but they anticipate more receipts till October the 8th. So far, 1,117 payments have been processed for over about $2.12 million. The exact dollars is $2,128,616 have been paid so far. About 450 requests have missing documents and they have been informed of that. So, at this time, I'd be glad to answer any question that there may be out there.
Those wishing to speak via Zoom, please click on the hand icon and the host will announce your name when it's your turn to speak.
Are you doing that first?
Pardon?
No, you're still in presentation.
Oh, my mistake, my mistake.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Council questions?
Council questions first.
Yeah, Elias, I'll start. Okay, so the reality is this, I think we've been pretty clear on that. I know you do understand, but I just want to say again, once again for the record, is that anything less than AQMD independent fence line monitoring of Hyperion is just unacceptable. So, that is the sole direction that we have to go in. There's no backing off of that. I understand from what you're saying, they are working on it. Have they given you a timeline? Because this is usually a very involved process that takes years.
Not directly, sir. However, in my conversation with AQMD, I did ask the same question and the feeling that I got, AQMD is really trying to get Hyperion to do this as soon as practical. The feeling I got, they are expecting something to happen within the next three months.
Okay, so is Hyperion balking at this or are they involved in a process and they want to get it done? They're stepping out of the way, they're not saying that they don't want it. I just want to be clear on that because I think that's one of the things that I think the community is concerned about is. You know, we're pushing, but who's pushing against us?
Yes, sir. As I indicated, according to AQMD, Hyperion has been proactive about getting that air quality monitoring system on their fence line. So, Hyperion is working diligently toward that goal. However, I must tell you, this is not going to be frankly cheap and it's not going to be very quickly done. It takes a few weeks, maybe a month or two to really final hash the proposal, go through the process, allocate the needed funding. I mean, these are my words. This is what I expect to happen, knowing how the public sector works. So, based on the information that I have gathered, Hyperion is very involved and they are very anxious to get this going. They are working on getting their priorities set and my expectation is that within maybe three, maybe two, four months, that we have that in place. Again, that is speculation on my end based on the conversation that I've had with AQMD.
Okay, I'll stop now, but I do think that by the next council meeting, we should at least be pushing them to give us the timeline. If it's a six-month timeline, if it's a four-month timeline, just push. All you can do, Elias, is push them. I get you can't make the decision for them, but I do think that's an important piece to go after. Thank you.
Yes.
I just have one other question, Elias.
Yes.
So, in the interim of waiting for the fence line monitoring to happen, have they committed that they're going to do manual monitoring for the long term until the fence line is up? And do we have that commitment?
Yes. So, both entities, they have committed to do that. Hyperion, they do the monitoring two times a day. Once about nine o'clock in the morning and once about one o'clock in the afternoon. And what they do is they will take a handheld monitor and they have 11 points around the Hyperion where they take readings and sometimes they take a number of readings and they average the reading and they have a spreadsheet where they record the readings. And I attended last Wednesday, I attended in the afternoon and I kind of sat with them in the car when they were doing that. So, the handheld monitor is calibrated by the factory and is the same monitor, and I confirm that with AQMD, it's the same monitor that AQMD utilizes to detect the concentration of hydrogen sulfide or H2S or SH2. I've seen both ways written. On the other side, in my conversation with AQMD, they have assured me that they are going to continue to address any complaints with respect to the odor from any concerned citizen. And I have personally received some emails where I have informed the applicants or the people who send me, not applicants, I'm sorry, the people who have sent me the email or called me their phone numbers. And to that end, AQMD has done frankly a good job and they will continue to address any complaint from any of our residents and frankly, other residents that live in other communities as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nicole?
Wasn't sure if you were going to ask something. Elias, thank you for taking the time on this. Couple of questions. First question is, we received early on a 30-day report and that 30-day report was following up on the spill, right? And it detailed lots of things that led to this discharge of sewage into the ocean. Are we, so this is a two-part question. First part is, are we going to get an updated report with more findings? Is there?
Yes.
Because, and I know the only reason there was a 30-day report is because by law, they are required to produce a 30-day report. So, by law, are they required to produce any additional reports?
Correct. They are. So, to elaborate, as you know, the president of the Public Works Board, Mr. Greg Good, has initiated and established a committee that consists of about tens of individuals from professors at UCLA that designed the sewer treatment plants and other general managers of other districts that run these types of plants, all the way to frankly, private consulting firms that are looking at what happened and what went wrong. And I also was, I take this as an honor, I was included and I'm serving in that committee. So, this committee is meeting, has already had about three meetings and the members of the committee were briefed on exactly what happened, a tour was given to them. So, this incident is being investigated by a third party, independent party, and I have already met with Hyperion staff, myself, separate from the committee also, to understand what's going on. So, upon the completion of the work, there is going to be a study that will be submitted that talks about what happened, what went wrong, what are the measures that ought to be taken so this will not happen again. And all of the members of the committee will have input into that report, including myself. This report already has initiated their first findings, but it is only on the early stage, if you would. So, it's going to take a few more weeks to mature and be completed.
Thank you. Follow-up to that, while you're on that committee, can you make sure to advocate that that committee doesn't simply focus on what the cause of the discharge was into the ocean, but actually also the other damages that happened around the plant? And the reason I ask that is at the Hyperion Council meeting, El Segundo Citizen Council meeting that, you know, you weren't able to get into, but you could watch, right?
Yes, sir.
That I hosted.
Yes, sir.
It came very apparent to me that, you know, the plant operating at normal operating procedures is not a 100% true statement, in my personal opinion. Do I have the facts to prove that? Not necessarily, but I do have the nose to prove it. And if you can smell what's happening in our town, then the plant is not operating at normal operating procedure. And to that end, through these investigations, I would really like to know what is going on. I mean, because it was more than just sewage being spilled into the ocean. I mean, sewage flooded that entire plant, which then, you know, I mean, you toured it multiple times. You saw.
Yes, sir.
There were pumps that were meant to move sewage from one place to another in the plant that were not functioning. There were flow meters that were not functioning. So, they had no idea how much flow was going from one place to another. And as much as I do, I care about the Pacific Ocean. I do not want to make this sound like I do not care about the spill and why sewage went into the ocean and what effects are from that. But how this is negatively impacting the residents of El Segundo is, it's a quality of life thing.
Right.
And it's gotten to the point where the residents of El Segundo are concerned about what they're breathing and for us to continue to get staff from Hyperion towing the party line, which is the plant is up and fully operational as normal operating business, when, as we saw today in an email you sent us, AQMD got 38 phone calls on Saturday complaining about a smell. So, it's not normal operating business.
Right. Well, so, the first part of your question, I can assure you that the way the flooding took place, where it shorted out the pumps and the sewage found its way to the basement, is one of the key things that this committee is looking at. And already comments have been made and I don't want to bore you and take time from your city council meeting, but that is something that the committee is looking at very seriously. The second aspect of your question, with respect to the number of complaints that AQMD received this Saturday, which is 38, you were exactly correct. I did have conversation with AQMD and it appeared that one of the scrubbers, those odor control, if you would, the systems, scrubber is what is referred to, has not been functioning properly. And as a result of that, this scrubber was not able to, if you would, to diffuse the smell and consequently, that created that odor issue. And that was confirmed based on the information that Hyperion sent it to me, which is basically indicating on Saturday, the 2nd of October, in the afternoon, there were some readings, and I'm sorry, not afternoon, but in the morning, 10 o'clock in the morning, the readings for SH2, one was 16.3 and the other was 10.2. These are relatively high, you know, because a nuisance low level is about two or three, but we're talking about 16.3 and 10.2, which indicated to me that there was something that went wrong. And AQMD told me this morning that the problem had to do with the scrubber and that is being investigated and they have looked at it and I believe it's been repaired and things are back to before the scrubber had that issue.
I don't know what to do with that information. Thank you, Mr. Sassoon.
Sure.
Mr. Minnick, did you have a comment that you'd like to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Protem and members of the council and those who are viewing, just to be clear here, Hyperion is saying they're back to normal operations. However, it's, or usual operations, we have unusual odors still taking place. We hear you loud and clear. We are aware, we're following and documenting it, we're looking at the AQMD numbers on the complaints that come in. So, as your staff, we know it's still an issue and we're in constant contact and we want them to do better. But to be clear, Hyperion is more than willing to put in the fence line monitors and have an outside third-party company collect the data and monitor them and keep tabs on what's going on. They're working with a contractor right now to get temporary fence line monitors in and they're also working on designing and to have constructed permanent air quality monitors. So, they're aware of the request, we're pushing them. I'm happy to provide weekly updates to the council, put on the website, social media, get it out to the community. So, we hear you loud and clear.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick.
What I'd like to also add, we did put on the website, there are two large scrubbers under construction, both totaling $35 million. They're big projects, they've been in the works. They will be completed by December and that should help, it better help, given the amount of money and effort with the odor issue. Again, that's on our website and if residents want to call in, we're happy to talk to them and walk them through that.
Thank you. Further council questions?
Just a statement, since, you know, we are here to advocate for our residents and so I will just say that in advocating for our residents, Hyperion is not telling us something. Okay? I mean, when you have to go to a soccer game and have your kids breathe that stench on a Saturday or try to host a birthday party with that stench and they can say, oh, a scrubber went down. The reality is that a scrubber is not going down every other day. Something is going on over there that is not normal operating procedure and the longer we just allow it to go on and the longer we just continue to accept that answer, the worse the acceptable level of stink is going to become. And this town used to stink. It didn't stink anymore until the spill. And so, something different is going on. I want to know what that is and I think the residents of the town deserve that. You know, we have to hold them accountable. I understand that $35 million of equipment is coming online, it's supposed to make life better, but that's, for me, that doesn't excuse the fact that I feel like we are still not being told what is happening. And so, please, just continue to advocate for us and for the residents because it's unacceptable. It's just merely unacceptable.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicole. Mr. Minnick, one more comment?
Mr. Mayor, Protem, members of the council, Councilmember Nicole, you're spot-on. And for the viewers at home, it's not acceptable what's happening right now. We hear you loud and clear. As your staff, we see the chatter that comes in every day. And we, believe me, everybody who's watching, who calls, who writes an email, makes comments on social media, we are aware. We're holding Hyperion's feet to the fire. There are multiple investigations going on. Our Public Works Director is on one of the panels. You have the Water Board, you have AQMD, Public Health, other county and city agencies and departments doing their review. There will be clarity on what happened when these reports are done. And rest assured, we'll make sure that those that were involved are held accountable. It's challenging for us, we want our residents to understand, it's not a city of El Segundo facility. We are impacted. L.A. City's not impacted, El Segundo is, but we are aware of it. But believe me, this incident happened on a very calm day with low levels of flow coming into the plant. There's not an outside incident like the thunderstorm that we had over the weekend that triggered this. So, it is perplexing and council, I'm looking you in the eye, and I'm sorry, we can't tell you exactly what happened or how it happened, but we will know what happened and we will hold L.A. City's feet to the fire to make sure whatever individuals or whatever happened, they're held accountable and they can provide a clear explanation to our community. In the meantime, we will keep working and advocating on behalf of our residents to get them reimbursement and to deal with the impacts. So, I hope that provides clarity, but we are working on it. Thank you.
To that, I'll add that on October 14th is the next meeting of Region 4 for the Regional Water Board, where many of these violations are adjudicated. It is something that, Region 4 is massive and I don't know that they will fully appreciate the acute impact that this had on the city of El Segundo. So, I would advocate for, there's nothing that stops elected officials from going, certainly our staff is aware of it, but that's on Thursday, the 14th. And it's a big deal. All right. Anything further, council? Onto public comment. Try this again. Those wishing to speak via Zoom, please click the hand icon and the host will announce your name when it's your turn to speak. If you're dialing in from a phone, you will need to press star 9 to raise the icon hand and star 6 to unmute. No video will appear, we'll be only hearing this via audio. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak? All right. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in attendance via Zoom or Madam Deputy Clerk Schilling?
Yes.
Howard? Howard, and I'd like to say something. I hear you guys all saying the same. What we'd like to see more, and we don't have to bother any one of our president, our chamber or our city council, if we could as a community in El Segundo post a sign outside our city hall, either it could be daily or it could be weekly or it could be monthly and we don't have to bother or call anyone else, give us a little bit, like the gentleman said, he's a part of that group now. Once we send the messages to our city and then we'll go outside and, like, we have a beautiful setup outside in our city hall, we have that little area there that we could put all that process meeting that's happening so we could read it. We don't have to be bothered. Does that make sense to you guys?
It does, sir. And may I ask, could you please state your name again? I think you got cut off just as you joined.
Howard, Howard. My name is Howard. I'm a resident since 1990 and yes, every time people ask me, where do you live? I live in El Segundo. Or you mean stinky El Segundo. I didn't say anything. I just, you know, goes out in the next year. But that's the only thing, because I go, every day I go downtown. So, we could post all this meeting and actions that are taken by you guys and the gentleman that just spoke to publish it in a kind of bulletin or something outside our city hall so you don't be bothered, I think. We could read it. We could spend time downtown and we have time to read it and see what's going on. And we don't have to be calling you and calling. This is my first time Zooming with you guys and I appreciate it letting us know. Yes, it is, it's a bad smell, but I understand you guys are working on it and that's what we like to hear, but at the same time, we like to be as a community. We're not a very large, large community. We could post everything outside our city hall, what's going on, you know? And we could go, I said, like my wife said, why can't we go down and read it in something on the board or something rather than calling and calling? Which is, makes sense. So, can we do that?
Howard will comment on our responses at the conclusion of all the public comments, but I think that your point is very well taken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No one else has their hand raised at this time.
Mr. Minnick, comments on Howard's comments?
Mr. Mayor, Protem, members of the council, we do have the most current information on our city website and social media platform. Howard, if you're still listening, if you could share with the city clerk's office your contact information, we'll make sure you have access to it.
And council comments to that effect?
I think, if I'm not speaking for Howard, but it seems like, can we print that off and put it on the bulletin, put it outside so if people are walking by, they can read it? I think that's what he was asking for because not everybody's going to go to our website, not everybody's going to open the email and there's a lot of people that walk around town. We have a bulletin board right out there. I'm just saying, I think we just print it off so people can see it.
Happy to do that. It'll be done.
Further council comments? Seeing none. Moving on to procedural motions. Looking for a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Stating only your last name, do I have a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only? Jerusso?
Captain Boyle.
Madam Clerk, may I have a voice vote? Yes.
Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierstuck?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Five-oh, the motion passes. Consent calendar. Council, are there any pulls from consent? Items two through seven. Seeing none. If there are no pulls, stating your last name, do I have a motion to approve consent items?
Jerusso?
Jerusso, second. The voice from above. Angels.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierstuck?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, passed, five-oh.
All right, there are no public hearings this evening. We will move to Section D, Staff Presentations. Item eight, Affordable Housing Service Provider Professional Services Agreement Recommendations. This is to approve a professional services agreement with Many Mansions, a California nonprofit, to provide affordable housing services. Mr. Midnick, who will report on this item?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Development Services, Michael Allen will do the presentation. We also have available, if questions, our consultant, Kathy Head with Kaiser Marston, and then representatives from Many Mansions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and the members of the City Council. First and foremost, I just wanted to formally introduce myself as the new Development Services Director. Although I've been in several of our virtual City Council meetings over the last month and a half, I, I haven't had the opportunity to, to make a formal presentation. So thank you for allowing me to join, and I'm looking forward to resuming and, and meeting everybody in person and, and many more staff reports after tonight. I, I will make a brief report. This item has been before the City Council several times in the last half a year or so. But tonight, staff is, is asking the City Council to approve a professional services agreement between the city of El Segundo and Many Mansions as the city's affordable housing provider, or services provider. For a little background and context, the initiation of the city seeking a service provider for its affordable housing programs dates back to two thousand sixteen, when the city approved a fifty-eight unit housing development project. As a result of this approval, the project contributed approximately five-point-three million dollars to the city's brand-new affordable housing fund, which has, has not been touched to date. In order to manage this fund, and augment city staff's in services, and manage the future contribution, or any future contribution to this fund, as well as any future development of affordable housing units approved by the city, in June two thousand twenty, City Council authorized staff to issue a request for qualifications, seeking firms interested in serving as the city's affordable housing services provider. A total of thirteen responses were received, and after careful consideration, in February two thousand twenty-one, City Council authorized staff to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with Many Mansions. This included an agreement that Many Mansions would provide affordable housing services at no cost to the city, and in exchange, Many Mansions would be granted first, first right of refusal to manage and develop city-initiated affordable housing projects. The selection of Many Mansions and direction to engage with Many Mansions was based on their forty-plus years of experience managing, developing, and assisting local agencies in their affordable housing projects and programs. In addition to assisting cities in meeting their Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, affordable housing allocation, Many Mansions also provides high-quality onsite tenant services and programs. Many Mansions' experience leveraging funding sources, managing over eight hundred units within almost thirty properties throughout Southern California, and their program development experience all closely aligned to the city of El Segundo's affordable housing goals. If approved tonight, the terms of this agreement would run through December two thousand twenty-nine, consistent with our RENA cycle six term. Contract terms also include the provision, as I mentioned previously, the right of first refusal in lieu of payment for providing affordable housing services. The first of right of refusal, refusal will allow Many Mansions to be the first party that the city approaches when there is a future affordable housing development project that would be city-sponsored. For example, if we were to solicit a request for qualification for a city-initiated affordable housing project, Many Mansions, they may respond. They may agree to work with the city at the same cost and terms as a third-party provider who responds to the RFQ, or they may refuse, which would allow the city to approach and consider another responsive developer's proposal. As a city's affordable housing services provider, Many Mansions will be working with staff to identify future housing development sites or sites for acquisition. They will assist in the ongoing housing development or housing element development and implementation of the housing element programs and goals. They will assist in negotiations with market rate development, housing developments, for the inclusion of affordable housing units within the development, or the payment of the NLU fee. And they will assist with ongoing administration and management of affordable and/or senior housing units within the city. This may include, and I emphasize, only after a City Council authorized study, management of the Park Vista senior living facility. Lastly, staff will coordinate with Many Mansions to provide semi-annual status updates and activity reports to City Council. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and am joined, as Mr. Midnick mentioned, by Rick Schrader, Schrader, and Alex Russell from Many Mansions, as well as Kathy Head from Kaiser Marston, to assist me in responding to any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Council comments?
Yeah, I will.
Councilmember Jeru?
I'll lead in. So we have representatives from Many Mansions here, right? Online?
That's right.
Okay, so they might want to pop in for this. So in reading through the staff report, and contract, I, you know, obviously, I see that Many Mansions has agreed to provide of, to provide in-kind work, administrative, consulting, et cetera, right? All that has been laid out. You just laid it out for us, you know, pretty much what it was written out. So my first thought was, wow, how, how does Many Mansions make any money? I mean, it, it, I'm, I'm pretty sure you've been in business for forty years, and I, I know you make it somehow. So then, when I saw the right of first refusal, it made sense. So here's the thing, I'm coming from a, a private industry point of view, so you're going to have to kind of walk me through this like, like I'm three, because when I look at things like this, it gives me pause, because to me, that's stymies competition for getting the best deal. Okay? So in other words, it looks to me like you're going to provide services in order to get the development, because that has to be where the money's made, right? So my first question, Michael, is, did all thirteen companies that submitted for this, did all have that right of refusal in there?
To my knowledge, that was, that was direction provided, once, once the city narrowed down its selection and recommended that we enter into the negotiating agreement with Many Mansions. But I'll, I'll defer to, to those who are here when that, when that process transpired.
And I'm guessing that's me. Hi, I'm Kathy Head from Kaiser Marston, and I did work on the selection process. The, the whole notion of the selection process was the city needed an entity that would provide two distinct sets of services to the city. So this is different than a normal professional services contract would be if you could have, say, for example, gone to the LA County Housing Authority and asked them to administer your affordable housing program, you would have paid them a fee to do that, and that would have been just a one set of services scenario. But there's not an organization in LA County who's able to just provide those administrative services to the city. The county is in no position to, to do that. And so when the RFP was originally drafted, it was drafted as the notion of being both a professional services agreement and having the potential to be a development partner with the city when and if projects came up, and also to provide the monitoring services and the administrative services for other affordable housing projects done within the city. So we had thirteen proposals, and we had a group of finalists, all of whom would have been willing to provide administrative services, all of whom expected to have the development opportunities. Many Mansions had the most direct experience in providing this type of services to cities while having a very strong track record in acting as a development partner as well. So the notion is, you're right, I mean, I think, and I'll let the Many Mansions people speak, but you're right that there's a bit of a, a trade-off here of having an entity that will provide you services that, at no cost, and having that opportunity to have the, the first look at projects. What I think needs to be very clear, though, is it's not a first right to tell the city what deal they're willing to do. It's the city's ability to look at a proposal by Many Mansions and determine whether or not that proposal, that development proposal, if there is one, meets the city's needs and is the best possible deal in terms of leveraging outside funding sources. As part of the RFP, we picked a developer who had experience finding the outside leveraging sources and having very good experience with their city partners. So any entity that would have come in under this RFP would have expected to have that first look at, at development opportunities. Again, with no guarantee they'll get it.
Okay, so this is something that was added in at the end, but the expectation was, no matter who we went with, it was going to be the same scenario, right? Because either, A, you're paying for the consultancy and administrative and all the other things you're doing, or it's a trade-off between letting them provide that, and then with the, the carrot being that potentially you would get the development contracts.
And, and to be clear, none of the other finalists offered as many services to the city and with as much experience as this, as this group had.
I'm not debating, I'm not debating the merits of, of Many Mansions. I'm, I'm not debating the merits. We already decided that, I'm, I'm not. I, I'm looking at that, because when we first looked through this at the beginning, I don't remember seeing anything like that the first time this was presented to us. So that's also one of...
I think it was always assumed they'd be a development partner.
Okay. So when you say right of refusal, the way it's, where it's written, on city-initiated affordable housing projects, right? So that would be anything that we own, that we decided we wanted to make into affordable housing.
That's correct.
Well, and if I could step in on that, too. And I don't know if, if Mark's on, on the call. Anything that you actually owned as a city would likely be subject to the Surplus Land Act, and so anything that you went out to, to do a development on that was subject to the Surplus Land Act, you would have to RFP.
That, that, that's correct. That's a new, the Surplus Land Act has been around for a long time, but it was amended in January, became effective, I think it was January of two thousand nineteen, where now...
Twain.
Well, I think it's, it's, well, okay, anyway, but it, recently, it was amended to where if a city is going to, with very limited exceptions, if the city's going to sell a piece of property, it has to put it through this process of offering it up to affordable housing providers. So i- i- if it's a city-owned piece of property, it's going to go through a process. Now, Many Mansions could still be the one to, you know, do the development, but we're going to have to put it through a sort of a, I don't know if it's a competitive process necessarily, but it, it's a process. And the other thing, I, I, having worked on a number of these transactions, these are complicated, they're, they're a little more complex, because there are tax credits involved, there's outside funding involved, and so they're pretty complicated about how they come together, and so, and, and Kathy Head can speak to this better than I can. So when you talk about bidding on a project, it's, it's not going to be a simple, it's, it's not probably going to be very simple like this development, and these are, a lot of these are nonprofit organizations, like this developer's going to pay X, someone's going to pay Y, it's going to be a kind of a complicated calculation as to what really is the best deal, because you're looking at taking all those funds and leveraging them into housing units. And, and there are repayments of those funds also, but again, Kathy can probably speak to that better than me, so I, and that's why you generally, if you, when you work on one of these deals, you, you, the way I've seen it done is, you select the, the partner, but the financial deal gets worked out as part of the process almost, because it's that complicated.
Okay, so for sake of argument, developer comes and they say, hey, we finally found someone that's going to buy this Dickenstein area, hypothetically, of course, and I want to build a hundred units, and I want to make twenty percent of them affordable. That's not city-initiated.
Correct.
Where do they come in?
You're talking about Many Mansions?
Yeah.
Or the housing service? They would help us then on the affordable, affordable housing piece to announce, to, they are helping us right now with the Pacific Coast Commons project. So they're helping to get as many affordable units.
Kind of helps navigate us through the process.
Yeah, they're like consultant, sure.
All right, got you. Thank you. Further comments?
And, and, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, if I may, it might be a good opportunity for Many Mansions to explain what that administrative assistance would, would look like when it's not a city-initiated project. Alex or, or Rick, if you can expand on what those actual consultant services look like from, from, you know, monitoring and, and implementation of a program.
Yeah. But good evening, council. To kind of reiterate the first, the right of first refusal point, you know, Many Mansions and how we make our money, you know, we understand that, you know, our, our ultimate goal is to have more affordable housing built in all the communities that we serve. And so this was a unique opportunity to help facilitate that. We don't expect nor have any situation where we're guaranteed any sort of projects. The assumption is, is we want to be your partner, we want to add value to, to the city, and we feel like, you know, should there be opportunities for development that, you know, we'd love to be in the mix. And I think that's kind of what the right of first refusal signifies, is that we're in the mix, under the same term. If someone came in and said, we're going to pay more for the land, or give the city better terms, the city has every opportunity and right to do that. So it's definitely no sort of guarantee that we'll get any deal, but we feel like this is a good opportunity, this is a community that we enjoy working with. Michael and his team have been, have been great. And part of the way we've been doing the work so far is with the Pacific Coast Commons, you know, helping them, helping the city have guidance on the unit mix, the affordability levels, even other terms like a live-work preference, or things of that nature that would be advantageous for the city. So right now, we're helping craft the affordable housing agreement, which would basically be the obligations that the market rate developer has with regards to the affordable units. And then if we were selected, again, it's the city's option, we would help with the monitoring, making sure those units were actually rented to lower-income households for the city's requirements, and that future residents who moved in were also rented to lower-income households, and we would monitor that annually as well, to make sure that everything is meeting the city's requirements. So that's how we are involved in these market rate developments that have inclusionary units or, or others. And also, if, if an affordable developer came in and said, I want to build a hundred percent affordable project, I have a great site, they would have every right to do so. The right of first refusal would have, have no bearing on those types of projects.
Thank you. Further council comments, questions? Mr. Mayor, any questions? Hearing none. I have a few. And as a bit of, bit of history, this, this fund we established, I think that, that was done at a very difficult meeting, as we remember, where we had very few options in very limited time, where we had people who had been sold units they could not move into. So we had a room full of people with small children who were locked out of their homes and couldn't get a certificate of occupancy. And under some duress, we came to this as a bit of our least bad choice of a menu of choices that was constrained, which was, I think, a surprise to a lot of us. So I think there's some items on here, you'll forgive us, forgive me, perhaps, if, if I'm a little bit gun-shy about the devil and the details. There's, again, a note about developing an inclusionary housing plan or referendum. That is something that we have never discussed on the dais, nor have we endorsed. It worked its way into a report previously, and I recall it was questioned in the minutes of that meeting. It is here in this report again. I think that is something if we're going to include, it's, it's noted here as a directive as part of this agreement. That is not an instruction that I believe that we've agreed to give. Secondly, I was surprised to see the attachment of Park Vista to this. I think that is a somewhat sensitive item. I agree that it is very heavily caveated in this, that all things have to come from the council and whatnot, but I, I think that just given the history of this fund as something that we approached with great reservation, and we are treading very lightly into the world of affordability and attainability, I would like it known, not so much for this council, but councils in the future, that it will, these are not a foregone conclusion if we approach this. Certainly, Many, Many Mansions has, has, has won this RFP or RFQ because they're qualified to do it, and, and no doubt, we will receive first-rate consultation in how to approach these things. But the way that we approach attainability, inclusionary housing, and those items is something that I think we have to be very cautious of in the city of El Segundo, and I think that we need to make sure that we codify some of these things, because it's a very long agreement. And while Councilmember Nicol, no doubt, will still be on the council in two thousand twenty-nine, some of us may not be, and we will be at risk of losing some of that tribal knowledge, if you will. So I, I suspect what I'm driving at more as a, a statement is, Mr. Midnick, this may come to you... Minnick, this may come to you, or perhaps Kathy, because you were here for the during part. I know Michael was not here yet, but that inclusionary housing piece, is there any requirement? I mean, certainly, there's any number of bills that address inclusion. There's a whole nother raft of about entrances and specific common uses in the most recent raft of bills that have been signed. Is there any reason that we have to stipulate that as part of the instruction in the agreement?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, it's in there because it's something that, it's an option, a potential tool in your toolbox that's being looked at as part of the housing element update. And that's why you would have a housing services provider to help you look at that and see if that's something that you're interested in. This is not setting the city down the path to do this type of thing. It's something that is to, it's a tool, a toolbox you may, you may need down the road. So this is just saying they would provide services to help with that.
My concern, Mr. Minnick, is that that's not what it says. So what it says is, on the very first page of this, is that it's to help staff develop that. And again, I raised that just because there was a disconnect with staff instruction on how we got to this point, that we ended up with this fund as a constrained set of choices. And so I think that we need to be very careful and clear about how we give these instructions. I'm going to look for the page here for us.
Are you talking about the Park Vista piece?
It's right now, I'm talking about the inclusionary housing. It's right to the instruction here on the agenda before we introduce it.
Second paragraph under the background, council member. And this is Development Services Director Michael speaking. So it is in the background for context. It is not part of the contract agreement, but it, and so it is certainly not something that is being committed to through the award of the contract. It is in there for contextual purposes, but I'm hearing you related to the moving forward path that we have to navigate for something of that nature.
Can we strike it out?
If it is part of the consultation, I am completely happy to be educated because I am not a land use specialist, nor am I an inclusionary housing specialist. So if it is part of the number of topics they will address, I'm fine with that. I want to make sure it was not part of an instruction. And similarly, because we are, we live here, and Many Mansions is going to be, by all accounts, a new partner here to understand that Park Vista and the ability of our seniors to age in place is sacrosanct, and the way we approach that has got to be very, very cautious in our approach to it. That's all. All right.
So do you, are you requesting any changes to this?
I am not requesting any changes. Those are more, I think, jury instructions.
So, Michael, in the contract, does any of that, is that, so those pieces are not in the contract?
That's correct. That is not specified in the contract. And if you look at Exhibit A, under the scope of work, item number five is develop a draft affordable housing strategic plan. And that would speak to what was just being discussed, as proposing a tool of options and educating both staff, the community, and council on different options we have moving forward, different policy decisions that need to be made moving forward. And so it is not spelt out, but something of that nature would be included in a housing strategic plan that would then be, you know, left up for discussion at a later date.
Although I do want to point out, since I was involved in draft agreement, it does reference Park Vista, but it's very clear that, you know, if the city decides to move forward, that, you know, they would have, you know, the ability to bid on that essentially or be part of it if the city moved forward. But it's very clear that that's completely at the city's discretion. That decision's not been made. It's just a reference. So, but I understand the council member's point. I'm sure Scott does, too, that this is...
Yeah, any action involving Park Vista requires the city council's approval, your discussion and your approval.
Further counsel comments? Councilman Drew?
On the Park Vista situation, can we, at the minimum, make sure that that discussion's happening here and not necessarily with advisory committees? I think there's a lot of information, there's a lot of things that have to happen, and we want to be very clear for the whole public to see what's going on. And I just don't want to detract from that.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, yeah, good question, good point. It's fully delineated on page four of the staff report. There's a paragraph in there that says, no other committee, board, or commission will weigh in on this, that the council will have direct oversight, and any action involving Park Vista is yours.
Councilmember Nicol?
All I was going to say is, Mr. Minnick, I just want to make sure that you and staff are aware that by us agreeing to this, if we so choose to agree to this tonight, item 1D in the agreement, when it says if the city so chooses to, I would like, like to make it clear that we are not giving direction to you and/or to staff to start to look into this and what it would take, because that is time, that is money, and that is not the direction this council is giving at this time. And so I just want to make it crystal clear that by agreeing to this, we are not giving direction for you and for Development Services to look into what a deed-restricted affordable senior housing facility would look like in Park Vista.
Understood. This is, in effect, free consultation from the city council of how this strategic plan will get a much more gentle hearing. We are, by all accounts, taking baby steps here. Are there any further counsel questions or comments? Hearing none. Stating your last name, do I have a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Many Mansions, a California nonprofit, to provide affordable housing services?
Nicol's so moved.
Boyle's so moved.
He's not even here. It's not your turn. Nicol's so moved.
Second, Boyle's.
Madam Clerk. Yes.
Councilmember Nicol?
Hi.
Councilmember Protem?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, and Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Five-oh.
Five-oh. Including the robot that I programmed to sit next to me. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you, Many Mansions, for joining us. Thank you, Kathy, as always. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Item number nine, the El Segundo Dial-A-Ride Program. This is a receive-and-file. There will be no vote. Mr. Minnick, who will report on this item?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, we put this item on at the last minute in response to a number of questions and inquiries that have been coming in, and as also to follow up on a presentation that community services staff did on this topic to the Rec. and Park Commission. So having said that, our community services director, Alyssa McCollum, will make the presentation to provide an update on Dial-A-Ride. She will do so virtually.
Director McCollum, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, city council and viewers at home. I am going to go ahead and share my screen really fast. And I do want to thank you for the opportunity to provide an update about the city's transportation services tonight. We apologize for the impact that having some of our services on hold has had on our residents, especially our older adults in the community. But we do look forward to implementing a pilot Dial-A-Ride and Dr. Dial-A-Ride program this month. I'm going to briefly cover the following tonight: the challenges of the city's traditional model for providing transportation services, micro-transit opportunities, the new Metro Micro ride-share service in town, our pilot program with Lyft for Dial-A-Ride and Dr. Dial-A-Ride, the work of the Transportation Subcommittee, which is a subset of the Recreation and Parks Commission, and plans for a transportation request for proposals for a more permanent strategy providing transportation services in El Segundo. This is a quick review of the city's past operations and shuttles. Key transportation operations include Dial-A-Ride, Dr. Dial-A-Ride, the Lunchtime Shuttle, and the Seasonal Beach Shuttle. The lower left outlines how many shuttles and drivers are needed to provide these services. As you can see, four or five shuttles and drivers Monday through Friday without the Beach Shuttle, six to seven on Monday and Friday with the Beach Shuttle, one on Saturday without the Beach Shuttle, and three on Saturdays with the Beach Shuttle. The city has used six vehicles for transportation services in the past few years, with seating capacity ranging from eight to 22, and two of those vehicles are currently out of service. This is an important slide, as it outlines both the usage and the service cost for the city of El Segundo's transportation services. The data is from the last three years, the last three full years of service prior to the pandemic, and illustrates a 25% decline in ridership and a corresponding increase in per-passenger cost for each ride for the services that are noted on this slide. The $27.07 per passenger cost in fiscal year 1819 is high, especially considering that most of the rides are within the city limits. Many cities have already contracted transportation services or are looking at contracting transportation services due to the challenges that are outlined here. They are not unique to El Segundo. Some have also embraced public-private partnerships to provide these services. According to the Recreation Division, in the last five years, the Transportation Section has only been fully staffed for a total of three weeks due to the difficulty of both hiring and retaining drivers. All drivers are part-time in El Segundo and are limited to 960 hours or less per year. They're also required to maintain that Class B driver's license. Due to the limited hours and many drivers' desire for full-time work and benefits, there is frequent turnover as well as difficulty covering shifts, which can cause interruptions in service as well as unhappy community members. The difficult situation became untenable during the pandemic. For a long stretch, the city had no drivers available to work and was unable to attract and hire more. Other challenges include having large shuttles in the fleet that are often used for one-on-one trips. Sometimes that can be difficult maneuvering in the small streets of El Segundo. We've also received feedback about environment concerns expressed by some members of the community. The shuttles, in addition, take up parking in Recreation Park when they're not in use. And then, as mentioned previously, the underutilized fixed roads, as well as the high per-passenger cost for the city. At the same time that we've been experiencing these challenges, there have been advances in technology and an expansion of micro-transit. So think Uber, think Lyft, and other similar companies. And you see some of the opportunities of micro-transit listed on this slide, including technology-enabled shared transportation, flexible on-demand and demand-responsive transportation, the ability to book by an app in addition to online and by phone, geo-fencing capabilities, which is really just a virtual perimeter for real-world geographic areas. So it helps with identifying service areas as well as who qualifies for services, a new Metro Micro program that is already in place in El Segundo, and I'll talk about that in just a moment, as well as examples of successful public-private transit programs in other cities, including with Lyft. So Metro Micro is a new shared ride service in El Segundo. I'm excited about this, and if you haven't tried it, I definitely encourage everybody to give it a try. They use new 10-seat passenger vans. Every driver I've had has been really professional and friendly. It's not door-to-door use, but they do use select pickup locations in town, so often bus stops, although there are a few virtual pickup sites as well. So, for example, you can go from the library to Docweiler, you can go from Recreation Park to near the Aquatic Center, you can pick it up at Grand and Eucalyptus and go to Ralph's, and obviously, many other destinations. The cost of the Metro Micro is $1 a ride, which is comparable to the cost of Beach Shuttle in the past. You can book directly with Metro, either by app or by phone. You can request an ADA-accessible vehicle, and they can also transport bikes. You must be 13 or older to ride alone. And as you can see on the left, the service area is the El Segundo city limits, with some expansion into West Chester and Playa del Rey. And that is an expanded service compared to previous Dial-A-Ride area. It does not include the interior of LAX, so inside by the terminals, but it did have one community member report that they took it to right outside of the airport and then easily walked into the terminal. If it's used heavily enough, Metro may expand their hours of operation. You'll see from the hours listed there that there are a few hours in the middle of the day that are not covered, although they did mention that they need to hire more drivers as well in order to expand the hours, as well as expand to other zones throughout LA County. So this should be a good option for many in town, but we do know that some older adults and others have mobility challenges, and they need a door-to-door option. So Lyft is able to provide a door-to-door service as part of a pilot program that is planned for the rest of this fiscal year. Rides may be booked via the Lyft app once an El Segundo Dial-A-Ride account is set up, or they can be booked directly with Jocelyn's staff. Rides will be able to be scheduled up to seven days in advance or on demand. And this is also another enhancement, as our past Dial-A-Ride services may not have been able to accommodate last-minute requests or may not have been able to accept additional reservations as the shuttle or time slot was full. Up to three passengers are permitted per Lyft ride, and the three passengers could be three older adults going shopping together from Park Vista, or an older adult and two family members going to an appointment. Passengers may request wheelchair-accessible vehicles as part of their profile for every ride, or they can make the request as needed. Lyft requires passengers to be 18 or older to ride alone. This first phase of the pilot program is for older adults and people with disabilities. Phase one pricing is the same as before, free Dial-A-Ride and $5 round trip for Dr. Dial-A-Ride. There will be opportunities to expand the program if desired. For example, a subsidy for rides to downtown could be added as an economic development initiative, similar to the goals of the Lunchtime Shuttle in the past. The city of Monrovia has had a partnership with Lyft since 2018. They charge passengers $2 to $4 per ride, and their average subsidy per ride is less than $10. Ryan Delgado and his outreach team at the Jocelyn Center are working with Lyft on implementation and will be planning marketing and public meetings to help community members utilize the new service. We will also be training library staff to help answer questions and promote the service at the main library's reference desk. The city's Transportation Subcommittee, again, a subset of the city's Recreation and Parks Commission, is reviewing other transportation needs in town and looking for other opportunities to improve service. This group will also help staff evaluate the pilot program. We also plan to issue a transportation request for proposals for all interested transportation providers in January of 2022, with the intention of having a more permanent solution in place during fiscal year 2022, 2023. So I am happy to answer questions now, if you have them. I also encourage community members to reach out to Ryan Delgado at the Jocelyn Center for more information. He has the latest information about implementation, as well as the timing of when the new service will go live. But again, our target is this month. Community members are always welcome to contact Recreation Superintendent Arisia Hester or me with questions and feedbacks as well, feedback as well. Thank you. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Thank you.
And please let me know if you have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Director McCollum. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I have a question, if you can hear me, but I'll wait. I know I can't see who's speaking right now.
The floor is yours, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alyssa, I'm really excited to see this. I remember learning about Monrovia's program through Southern Cal Association of Governments back in 2018. I was really intrigued. And I'm glad they've made progress on it. When you look at the financial analysis and you factor in the driver wages, I'm just curious what you're assuming for driver wages or what we've been paying historically, and whether or not that includes fully burdened payroll tax and workers' comp. I understand they're not eligible for benefits.
So we wouldn't be paying drivers directly through Lyft. We would just be paying a flat rate for the rides?
The analysis that you did to come to the conclusion of the total expense?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. So for that, so the total budget for those three years was $760,784. About 53% of that was for salaries, so $405,000. And again, the majority of that was for part-time drivers. So it did include both, you know, salaries and benefits. However, it didn't include, you know, full department and overhead costs. So that cost would actually be even higher if we included that as well. And then 40% of that, that three-year budget was for operations and maintenance, which was equated to $355,760.
And then from a liability standpoint, Lyft versus our vehicles, if one of our drivers and vehicles get into an accident, someone gets hurt, what are the legal implications and liability concerns with our, you know, ourselves doing it versus outsourced with Lyft?
There are some advantages of that, and Mark, feel free to jump in if you'd like, but there is liability and insurance required as part of the agreement with Lyft for them to absorb.
City Attorney, I believe that question was for you.
Well, from a liability perspective, having Lyft do the transportation is, you know, generally, that would appear to me to be less, provide fewer opportunities for the city to get sued as opposed to the city providing the service through its employees and having its own bus service, so, or providing the Dial-A-Ride service itself. So I, from a liability point of view, it does seem like... So from a liability point of view, it does seem like an advantage to go through Lyft.
Thank you. Huge event. Last question is, Melissa, are we able to get rider feedback similar to the way you get it with Lyft and will we get reports back to council? Because it would be really nice to have that. I don't think we have a mechanism in place for that currently.
We could definitely look into that. We do want to do an extensive evaluation as part of this pilot program in order to make a good decision for the RFP. So yes, we can look into that. That's not something that is in place currently, but we can speak with Lyft about that. And probably build it into our account profiles on our site as well.
Great, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thanks, Melissa.
Councilmember Piercestuck.
Yes, so Melissa, this is Councilmember Piercestuck. Question for you about, you know, the pilot program is for 55 and older. So I want to make sure that, and a lot of times, especially our seniors, don't have access to the phone apps because they use a little flip phone. So I want to make sure that we're doing a really good job of creating a tutorial and doing a real good communication outreach program to let them know about this program and to introduce them to the program because they're going to be gun-shy on it. And I want to make sure that we almost do, you know, that they can call the hotline number and just do it over the phone rather than using the app and that they get comfort in using it, because otherwise, we're going to launch this program and no one's going to use it.
Absolutely. I agree wholeheartedly. There will be a great outreach effort. There'll be public sessions at Jocelyn Center, Park Vista, and the library to do those demonstrations. I suggested to Recreation Staff that we also maybe do a trip on Metro Micro for those that are interested to learn how to use that service as well. But I do want to assure the community that if they always want to go through Jocelyn Center and the concierge service there, is what they call it, that is absolutely fine also. Every ride could be booked by calling the Jocelyn Center, both the beginning of the ride and the return home.
And maybe we could do a video, maybe use the communication team to prepare a video and basically show it so that we can post that video on using the Metro as well as using the style ride service.
Absolutely. It's a great idea.
I'll piggyback on that with one extra note, that the concierge service may be an excellent place to gather feedback, even just anecdotal while it's fresh in the mind of our riders of the pilot program, and ask them, you know, what did you think? Because ultimately, they are, I mean, they're the reason this exists, and they will define its success, so hopefully it works out. Do we have council consensus to receive and file?
Yes.
Very well. Moving on to item 10, COVID-19 update and to ratify the city manager's amendment to administrative order number one dated September 29, 2021. Mr. Mitnick, who will report on this item?
Our acting fire chief, Deana Lee, virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Acting Chief Lee, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of city council. Acting Fire Chief Deana Lee, I have a short COVID update tonight. Let me just share my screen. Are you able to see the slides?
Yes, we are.
Okay. The first slide, this shows the current numbers. The case rate is down 187 in LA County. The Pfizer booster vaccine has been approved in LA County, and we're still awaiting the FDA approval for the Moderna booster for first responders and high-risk individuals. We will let you know when that is available.
Chief Lee, could you put that in presentation mode so we can get the full screen? I did not bring the glasses I periodically borrow that aren't mine, I promise.
Yes, stand by one.
We've got it, thank you.
Okay. And?
Could you back up to those case counts real quick?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
So actually up four in El Segundo, but overall, a case rate down in LA County. The next slide shows the Pfizer booster, and we'll have this available on our website also. Most of the city employees here have the Moderna, so when that we are able to get the Moderna booster, we'll make that available for the first responders and high-risk individuals. And then I'm sure we'll eventually be open to all, the same way that the vaccines rolled out originally. This slide lists the current requirements, recommendations for COVID prevention. We're also going to have this posted on the website for the outdoor and indoor public settings. And the governor ordered students grade seven to 12 and K to six to be vaccinated following full FDA approval of the vaccine, and the requirement will take effect January 1 or July 1 of 2022. And this will be my last COVID update. I'll take any questions.
Council questions?
Yeah, Chief Lee, I do have one. On the, obviously, we keep seeing the numbers and we're seeing where we're at, and LA County still has their mask mandate, you know, for indoor spaces and things like that. Have they indicated that there is, you know, there's a certain set of metrics that have to be hit before they change that? Because as it is, you can go down Orange County and do whatever the hell you want, basically, but here, you're still stuck in a situation. Is there any indication that they have any idea of what they're going to tie a decision to? Or is this just, we're going to keep rolling this down the hill and have it never end?
Yeah, I wish I could give you an answer. There is no end in sight. I would just be speculating on the political, and, you know, there's a lot going on. I wish I had more information to give you on that. Maybe Randy could speak to that because he's more in touch with what's coming down, but I can't answer that question. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
My question or what their decision is?
Well, because, you know, the numbers ebb and flow. LA County, the case rates are going down. You know, the hospitals are fine. I would just be speculating on what the reasons are to why they keep putting these mandates out. Maybe the city attorney has an idea.
Deana, I'm here in the council chambers, and yeah, to answer your question, sir, they have not indicated at all if there's any type of metric that needs to be hit or anything else. The best that we can do is, you know, and we've really started to see, just in the last week or two, a significant drop in case numbers. I think even just the last two days, it's been under 1,000. So, you know, we've, so in the last couple of weeks, we were hitting right around 2,000, and now we saw 1,500, and then now, in just the last couple of days, or in the last week, we've seen, we've been hitting just above and just below 2,000, or I mean, 1,000. So I'm hopeful that as we continue to see these case rates drop, that they will loosen up the restrictions, and as more people get vaccinated, of course, and everything else, that we can drop these masks, absolutely. But there's been no indication from the Health Department as to any metric to be hit.
Have they indicated also what these new, obviously, you have a lot of testing going on right now because for LA County schools, not ours, thank God, there is mandatory testing weekly. Is, are they seeing, I would have thought you would have seen a bigger jump because of the amount of testing. The fact that they're doing that much more testing and seeing a decline, I know logically says one thing, but I also understand that we're not really making decisions based on logic when it comes to that type of stuff. So I just think that we keep looking at numbers and we keep giving all these things every day, and you guys are doing an incredible job on it. I'm just struggling to understand why I'm still looking at this.
I understand, sir, and I absolutely agree with you. We did see, at the beginning of the school year, we did see actually a little spike there. We saw a lot of, even El Segundo numbers go up in groups, and so we kind of thought that was, of course, we don't get names or anything like that, but we kind of attributed that to back in school and kids and everything else. But now that I think, I think it's kind of regulated a little bit, and now we're seeing it taper off, so thankfully. And so, but I agree with you. I really hope to see the restrictions go away and as the case numbers continue to drop.
And I'm actually not suggesting anything about the schools. That's a whole separate situation. I'm kind of just talking about businesses and just normal day-to-day things where you are able to walk into a coffee shop in any other county except for this one, and...
Yes, sir.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further council questions? Councilmember Piercestuck?
I just have a question, actually. This is geared toward Mr. Mitnick. I know we had some initial conversation a few minutes back about pulling away from LA County Health and combining with some other cities and exploring the opportunity to maybe pull away from LA County Health or component. Are we still looking at that, and what's the status of that?
That's a loaded question. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, yes, we did look at that. We did talk a little bit with South Bay Cities. There was interest to have the discussion, didn't go much further than that. I do know the city of West Covina is spending a lot of time and energy on this issue. Is that correct? And maybe a handful of others. So I'll, let me get some more information, report back to council. Mark, do you have any other information?
You know, West Covina, as I understand it, is a study, which is a matter of public record, as to what it was going to cost to provide the services compared to what are essentially free services that you get from the county. You may not like the service, I get that, but, and West Covina at least voted to move forward to do it on their own, even though they have some economic challenges. So we should be able to get that data that they gathered as to what they estimate the cost of providing their own health department would be.
I can weigh in a bit on this. And so one of the challenges of pulling away is that you don't get the less, the cost of implementation from the property tax that's being taken by the county, so you don't get to deduct that to start of your own health departments effectively, if you think of it in terms of like a health savings account. It's effectively an after-tax expense that we would have to spend. It is prohibitively expensive. That said, I think the energy to do it has not dissipated. I know that in a time of crisis, it's a little bit difficult to do, but certainly in the COG within our region, Region Eight, there's a great deal of interest in setting this up and seeing if there's a way to parse it. So when it comes to the rudimentary services that you receive from the county, mental health services, those things could still be a county service, but when it comes to in extremis, health emergencies, that we could have our own ability to make so to implement things with emergency orders. So it's not dead. It is very, very expensive, but again, it's not dead.
Thank you.
I have one question, and this is a bit city-managery on this, and this is, come October 7, we have to regulate for bars and clubs and things for people entering have to be vaccinated. We're effectively deputizing bartenders and waitresses to have to enforce this to people who potentially may not be in a position to make their best decisions about whether or not they were going to enter those facilities. Do we have a, does the police have a plan on how to assist? City Attorney?
Well, there's two issues. One, it's the Health Department that will oversee the enforcement, so if the bars aren't doing it correctly, then the Health Department may issue citations to them.
Well, I mean, this is the issue, right? A bar, who, their liquor license is at stake, is going to have to be incredibly rigorous on enforcing this, but this is something that I think that they're going to want to be calling us to help with. If they have someone who, when celebrating, let's say, a cowboy victory, is unduly exuberant...
You're talking about the pay, they might have issues with the patrons and not wanting to comply like we've seen on airlines and different things and having combative situations. Yeah, that would be, I don't know if the Chiefs on, but, you know, they would have to make a call for service to...
I would say, Mr. Mitnick, as this rolls out on this weekend, that that is probably an area of heightened risk, and we may want to alert Chief Bermudez that areas that we may not normally have seen calls for service, we may indeed find it.
So noted. I'll personally follow up with the chief.
Any further questions on this? Mr. Mayor? Very well.
No, good, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Lee. And now on to the city manager's amendment to administrative order number one. Mr. Mitnick, who will present on this item?
Just briefly, I will, Mayor Protem and council. This is to extend the outdoor dining licensing that's been allowed to occur through the city, mainly it's on Richmond and Main Street and Standard. This will allow that to continue to occur. There was an expiration date of September 30, so it's now been extended, and we're going at this from a different perspective since we don't know when the county's order will expire, when the state of emergency will expire. It's going to be open-ended, and it will, it will continue until such time the city manager issues an order that curtails the ability to get this temporary license. Now, with that said, it's not a permanent right, and we, you know, we have agreements with all of the restaurants that are using the public rideaway, and they understand that it can be terminated at any time, but, you know, the sense at this point is it's going to continue at least through the end of the year, and ABC has now, or there was legislation that was passed that's going to allow for the temporary ABC licenses to be, or temporary ABC allowing this use of, the sale of alcohol out on the sidewalks, and so that will, that will, the legislation provides that that can continue for a 12-month period after the end of the pandemic. And so the thought is that all of the agencies are working together to allow the restaurants to probably operate that way for at least 12 months after the end of the pandemic. So, and just briefly, you know, I've been meeting with the staff, and we're working on, and I know there's going to be a presentation at council in the near future, how the city could continue to temporarily provide that ability for the restaurants, and then looking at more permanent solutions through like the downtown specific. But I think there's a presentation coming to council in the next several meetings on that issue.
So, Mark, I have one question. Who's going to determine the end of the pandemic? Like, that's a really loaded...
I know, that's a really good question.
I mean, is it 12 months from what date?
Yeah, I guess a great question. When I was reading the legislation, that's the first thing that went through my mind is, well, when's the end of the pandemic? So I, you know, I read through, there's so much legislation, I'm going to have to go back and see. I didn't see, it didn't jump out at me as to when that is, but I assume it's going to go with the governor's orders when he declares the emergency is over.
All plagues are ended by Charlton Heston. Any further council questions? All right. Do I have a motion to ratify the amendment to administrative order number one?
So moved.
Jeru second. Madam Clear, take a voice vote.
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Piercestuck?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, who's in town?
Yes.
Yes.
Five oh.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, City Attorney.
Thanks, Randy.
Item number 11, fiscal year 2021, year-end financial report. The recommendation on this is to receive and file. There'll be no vote. Mr. Mitnick, who will report on this item?
Chief Financial, sorry, Chief Financial Officer Joe Lilio will make the presentation.
Mr. Lilio, the floor is yours.
Absolutely. Let me just share my screen. Okay, can you see the presentation up?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Okay, sorry about that. It's having problems flipping through. Okay, so the slide in front of you represents the general fund revenues for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and I just want to remind council that this was a nine-month abbreviated budget. So we switched from the federal fiscal year that the city had been on for over a decade... So we switched from the federal fiscal year that the city had been on for over a decade. So that was October first through September thirtieth of each year. Uh, we went to a nine-month abbreviated budget for 2020, 2021. So that was October first of 2020 through June 30 of 2021. And moving forward, we're going to be on the traditional, uh, municipal budget cycle of July one through June 30. So what this, uh, this slide in front of you is, uh, the first, uh, column there, adopted revenues is what we adopted in the budget, so $59 million. Um, the unaudited actuals is the next column. And if you go all the way down, uh, the bottom of the slide there, middle bottom of the slide, 61.7 million. Um, and then I do have, uh, each of the main revenue categories. So we ended the year, um, just about, uh, 2.7 million, uh, above what we had estimated in the budget. Now, while that may look like, you know, great news, um, that, that's not. And, um, subsequent slides will tell a little bit more of a, a story about, uh, our budget and our financial status. Um, so a few things I do want to point out here are, one is the business license tax. Um, we had estimated that there would be a reduction in business license tax due to maybe businesses closing down or operating, uh, you know, on a limited basis. And actually, our numbers came in, um, right about where they were, uh, the year prior. Um, so that was, uh, 1.3 million, uh, more than what we anticipated with the adopted budget. Uh, property taxes, uh, that 9.6 million actually represented, um, a slightly higher, uh, amount than what the prior was. And, uh, it came in significantly higher. And that was really predominantly due to property, uh, change in ownership. So both commercial and residential, uh, properties are changing, uh, ownership and being reassessed at the current market value versus whatever the prior Prop 13 value was. And that bumped our, uh, revenues for property tax up to 10.3 million, about 660,000 over the anticipated budget. Uh, just a few more that I'll point out. UUT, uh, the utility users tax, uh, same thing we had anticipated, uh, due to COVID and the, uh, mandatory shutdown of many businesses, um, uh, reduced, uh, UUT revenue. And that came in a slightly higher, just, uh, about 528,000 higher than what we anticipated. Then number six there, the transient occupancy tax or the hotel tax, TOT, um, significantly lower than what we had, uh, anticipated in the budget. Uh, so I'll just spend just a few seconds talking about this one. Um, so on a full 12-month cycle pre-COVID, uh, we were just above 15 million a year in TOT. So about, uh, one, one and a quarter million per month is what we were, uh, receiving pre-COVID. Um, during 2021, we received, uh, just about 550,000 per month. So drastically down, uh, compared to pre-COVID, uh, monthly TOT revenue. And much lower than what we anticipated with the adopted budget. And that was, that was a pretty conservative number, uh, to begin with. So, uh, just, uh, right around 4.9 million or 2.6 under what we anticipated. Um, and, uh, to touch a little bit more on that, so the average occupancy rate, uh, during, uh, this fiscal year was 50%. Pre-COVID, our average occupancy rate was 85 to 90%. That's one piece of it. And then the room rate is another, uh, component of the TOT. Uh, room rates were significantly slashed during, uh, 2020, uh, 21. Uh, so that resulted in, um, the, you know, significant, uh, underperformance of the TOT. Um, and then, uh, maybe one other one that I'll, uh, point out real quick, um, is the interest in rentals. So our interest income was about 242,000 under what we anticipated. And that's predominantly due to, uh, drastically lower, uh, interest rates. Uh, at the time we adopted the budget, interest rates were ticking up and that's what we thought the trend was going. And, uh, just the opposite, uh, uh, interest rates are at historically low rates. Uh, if there's any questions on any specific revenue items before I move on? Okay. Okay, so this slide represents, uh, the top 10 general fund revenues, uh, going from 2016, 17 through 2020, 21. And really what I want to point out there is that top, uh, blue line, which is the TOT, you can see that was our number one revenue, uh, 2016, 17, and all the way through 19. And then when COVID hit, you see that just, uh, just tanking. Um, so we were at right around 15 million, uh, before COVID hit. Um, all the other revenues seem to be, um, coming back again, uh, again, except for the TOT. And also the, um, uh, utility user tax is also, uh, struggling as well. I, I, I wanted to put this slide in here. Um, I think this is a very telling picture. Um, so while, again, I mentioned that the revenues came in slightly, uh, higher, 2.7 million higher than we anticipated, uh, this picture here represents the total general fund revenues from 2015, 16 through 2020, 2021. Um, and you can see, uh, even in 2019, 20, uh, which was a full 12-month cycle, 72.5 million. Um, you know, that, that goes back, uh, that takes us back to 2016, 17. And then 2021, uh, again, you know, even lower. Um, even though it's a nine-month abbreviated budget, we received the vast majority of our revenues during the period, um, of October through, uh, June. July through September tends to be very dry months in, uh, general, in general fund revenues. Um, so I did put a trend line, that dotted red line, and you can see it's heading, uh, in a negative direction. So, you know, this is something, um, that is very concerning and something I just want to point out here. So if we look at 2018, 19, so that says 80.2 million. And compare it to 2019, 2020, uh, the 72 and a half million, that's a drop of 7.7 million or 9.6%. However, um, if COVID did not happen, 2019, 2020 would have ended up at about 84 million dollars. Um, so the, the true revenue loss, uh, just in that one-year period is 11 and a half million or 13.7%. And then now if we factor in, uh, 2020, 2021 and compare it to 1819, uh, that's a revenue loss of 18 and a half million or 23%. Uh, just on the numbers in front of you, then again, if you, we, if you look at the trends that were happening pre-COVID, um, the real revenue loss is about 22 and a half million dollars. That's significant, drastic, or 27%. So, you know, these are drastic revenue losses that will have lasting fiscal challenges for the city to strategically, strategically address moving forward. And if counsel does have any questions, please, uh, feel free to interrupt. Uh, so this slide represents the general fund expenditures for, um, June 30, uh, year end. And if we look at the total adopted budget, so that's 59 million. I have to look at the bottom of the slide there. And then the unaudited actuals, 58.9 million, uh, difference of about 117,000. So pretty much spot on. Some departments that, uh, you know, spent over and then some departments had savings, but in, in totality, um, there was a savings there of about 117,000 dollars, uh, where 99.8% of the adopted budget spent. Can't get much closer than that. Any specific questions on any of the, uh, departments?
Councilmember Nickel?
Non-depart- departmental, Joe, million dollars higher, 127% of their budget. What is non-departamental?
So that's, um, where we put, there, there's a few things here. One is any, uh, employee that's retiring, uh, from the city, uh, depending on their MOU or, um, the personnel code, whatever dictates, um, their benefits, uh, we may have to pay out their leave bank accrual. So whether it's vacation or what other leave banks they have that they're entitled to be paid out, uh, that was a bulk of that. Uh, so we did have, uh, quite a few retirements, uh, during the year. I don't know if you recall, we also had early retirement incentive, uh, program last December. Um, so there were several employees and that was for miscellaneous employees, not sworn, so the non-sworn only. Several employees took advantage of that. And then just, uh, through attrition throughout the year, we had a higher attrition rate than normal. Um, and then also another component of this is the unemployment, um, amount that we have to pay out. So because the part-time recreational park, uh, staff were not employed for most of the year, um, they, many of them did file for unemployment and that was also another component of that, uh, negative million dollars.
Thank you. Before you move on, where do we, um, place when we do payouts for workman's comp claims or any other type payouts that the city has to deal with for employment matters? Where does that fall? Does it fall under the given department or is it caught somewhere else?
So it's, it's, uh, components of this. So one, the actual cost, uh, hits the workers' comp fund. However, um, during the budget process, uh, we actually have an actuary report done that, uh, projects based on our experience, um, what those costs are, are going to be for the upcoming year. And we include that in, uh, the personnel charges for each department. So each of these departments are charged, um, a certain, um, workers' comp, um, amount, uh, based on, you know, the jobs, so police have a certain rate, fire have a certain rate, non-sworn, office personnel have a certain rate and, uh, the non-sworn, uh, crews out in the field have a certain rate. So that's all charged, that's part of the adopted budget. And then it gets transferred over to the Internal Services Fund, which is the workers' comp fund. And then you have a fund balance there and then the actual claims are charged against that workers' comp fund hitting the fund balance.
Thank you.
Joe, I have one question. This is Carol Firstick. The, um, line 12, COVID-19 response for 667,000 dollars. Have we claimed that from, as a, um, to get that money paid back from the, from the state?
Yes, Randy, uh, Dr. Collins has been, uh, leading that effort. And, uh, he's very diligent with the all-hazard incident management team at, uh, periodically submitting, um, claims to FEMA, uh, for that. So I, I actually do have a slide on that subsequent slide, but we have about 1.7 million, uh, in, in claims filed with FEMA. And, uh, last year, so during 2020, 2021, we only received, uh, about 84,000 in, in, uh, claims that we filed. So we have about 1.7 million still, um, in the queue to be refunded. In fact, I was just handed a check today, uh, for, uh, right around 120,000. So FEMA is very slow, unfortunately, to, to pay back these claims. They can take years to do it. Um, we did receive significant, um, uh, portion of our initial claim filed, uh, two years ago when COVID first started. But again, we still have about 1.7 million in the queue with FEMA.
Mr. Mitnick? Uh, just to be clear, City Council, we did incur expenses in the last fiscal year. We will get reimbursed in, in this fiscal year and subsequent fiscal years. I believe, Joe, our, our, our share of ARPA is close to $4 million.
Yes, but ARPA is, is completely different from the FEMA, uh, reimbursements that we're doing. So, uh, yes, I, I do have a slide on the ARPA funds as well. It was about 3.9 million dollars, uh, the city's receiving for that. Uh, split in two years. So, uh, the first payment was received, uh, July of 2021. Um, and second payment will be received in July of 2022. And again, I have a subsequent slide on more details on that. Okay, any further questions on the expenditure side?
Nope, you're okay to proceed.
Okay, while this slide, uh, i- is very busy, um, really what I want to point out here is we have the adopted budget, so that's that one column, and then the year-end estimate, that's one column. If we can go down to the very bottom, unassigned reserves, um, so we had adopted, um, we ended fiscal year, uh, 2020, 21 and adopted the budget for 21, 22, uh, leaving 20% uh, in general fund reserves, but having a zero unassigned, uh, reserve. So we used up all the reserves, we allocated it out. Now with our new, uh, numbers that we know, we ended, uh, June 30. So if you go down all the way to the bottom right-hand corner, for 21, 22, uh, we now have about two, just under 2.7 million in unassigned reserves. Uh, so that's, um, in, in addition to the 20% reserve, uh, that will have, uh, that will bring during mid-year, which will be, uh, probably early February, uh, that council will have the opportunity to, um, decide how to allocate that, uh, 2.7 million dollars, whether it's towards capital or other, uh, policy objectives.
Joe, is the Economic Uncertainty Fund fully funded in this budget?
Uh, no, it is not.
And that typically is $3 million?
Uh, 2 million.
2 million?
We're at 1.6 right now.
Very well.
Last year was nine months. This year will be 12.
Okay, am I okay to proceed?
Please do.
Um, I, I put this slide in here, so this was part of a 21, 22 budget. I know mixing fiscal years here, but, um, to balance the budget, if you recall, we had this $9 million budget deficit for the current year. Uh, we, part of the balancing of that budget, uh, we said we're going to use 2.4 million from the OPEB trust because it overperformed. Um, so I'm gonna go back to the previous slide, so 2.7 million, you know, if counsel, and that would be one of the policy discussions during mid-year, if we don't want to pull that 2.4 million out, then, you know, that would come from that 2.7 million dollars that we reduced. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there. Uh, so here's a slide on, uh, the federal and state funding related to, uh, COVID. Um, so the city was awarded, uh, just over 3.9 million, just under $4 million for the American Rescue Plan, for ARPA funds. Uh, we received $0 during fiscal year 2021. Um, however, the first payment, uh, was received, uh, mid-July for the current year, uh, just under 2 million. And then the second half and final payment will be received in, uh, 2022, 23. So that, uh, that'll also be, uh, a discussion during, um, mid-year on how to allocate and appropriate those funds. Uh, we did receive 87 million in FEMA dollars, uh, for 2020, 2021. Um, this was our reimbursement to the city for COVID-related expenditures. And again, as I mentioned, there's 1.7 million pending in the FEMA queue. And I just wanted to, you know, point out the pension obligation bonds that were, uh, issued back in late May, um, early June. Uh, so the POBs were issued for 95% of the city's unfunded actuary liability with CalPERS. Total of 143.5 million in taxable pension obligation bonds were issued. City did receive a credit rating of double A plus by Standard and Poor, that's excellent credit rating, just one notch below perfect credit rating of triple A. And we were given a blueprint on how to get there. So that's, uh, one of our goals is to get to the triple A rating down in the future. Uh, the interest rate, the interest rate on the bonds was 2.568%, second lowest, uh, rate, um, on a POB issuance in the last two years. That's excellent. Uh, no fiscal impact to 2020, 2021, so I did want to point that out. Um, it will impact, uh, the current year and moving forward for the next 19 years, saving the city, uh, 84.3 million dollars. Uh, this is a 10-year financial graph. So I had been presenting this for several years to council and it, it looked horrible. It was the opposite. You had expenditures appropriations, um, higher than, uh, projected revenues. Now with the POBs and TopGolf, uh, in here, um, you know, it looks, uh, better picture, better outlook moving forward. However, this does not represent any, um, MOU agreement. So it's taking the status quo, uh, with the MOUs and, and taking that forward. Okay, just real briefly on other funds, I'll be very brief. Air price funds, we have water. Under the water fund, uh, revenues, uh, were higher than what we anticipated for a couple of main reasons. One was the increase in residential and commercial demand, um, was significantly higher than budget. One because of, uh, a continued drought. So it, we got very little rain and typically during, um, our wet season, which is late winter, early spring, uh, demand is significantly reduced. That did not happen during fiscal year, uh, 2020, 21. So much higher demand, therefore higher revenues. Um, also, we anticipated that, uh, the shutdown due to COVID, uh, businesses were, were not going to be operating, uh, you know, at full capacity. Uh, while they were not at full capacity, they did operate much higher than what we anticipated, uh, in the budget. Um, so those are the main reasons for the, the revenue difference. Okay, and the wastewater fund, uh, revenues were, uh, pretty much, uh, right on, uh, where they needed to be. Um, expenditures came under and that was really due to, um, capital projects that were pending, uh, that did not happen yet, that will happen, uh, during this year and, and the next fiscal year as well. Okay, Internal Service Fund, so, uh, this is a general liability fund. Uh, revenues, uh, this is really coming from transfers from, um, uh, other departments. So that's right where it needed to be. Uh, expenditures were, uh, higher, uh, almost by a million dollars. And that was really due to several large employment claims, um, that the city had to pay out. And that was really due to several large employment claims, um, that the city had to pay out. And during the development of the next budget, um, those, uh, departments that, uh, resulted in those claims will, will be charged back, um, those dollar amounts. Workers' comp funds, um, so again, uh, revenues were, were pretty much where they needed to be, just a little bit lower. And that was due to, um, lower interest allocation, uh, to the fund balance for the workers' comp fund due to lower interest rates. Um, and again, here, the, uh, expenses were, were higher than what we anticipated in the budget. And again, that was, uh, primarily due to, uh, increase in payout in workers' comp claims. And again, those departments responsible will be charged back, um, those dollar amounts. Quarter of a housing fund, um, so as you heard from Development Services Director, uh, Mr. Allen earlier, uh, we do have this balance of five point, uh, three million dollars sitting there, so that is sitting, uh, in the fund balance. That brings us to the next step. So there is a revenue study session, uh, scheduled for, uh, the next, uh, council meeting, but prior to the council meeting, um, on October nineteenth, um, the twenty twenty-one, uh, budget. The audit financial report will be presented to council, uh, sometime in December. And then, uh, mid-year budget for the current year that we're in will be presented to council during February. And the development of, um, what we, we're hoping is gonna be the first biannual, uh, biannual budget. So it'd be twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. And, uh, we have strategic planning study session, probably some time in January, February. Uh, budget study sessions in March and April and, uh, the budget hearing and adoption June seventh. And that wraps up the presentation. I'm open to any questions the council may have.
Council questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Mittnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, just some final comments here. One of the items on the next steps we should have had delineated on October nineteenth, we're gonna come back to you as directed at the, uh, budget hearing on June, June fifteenth, with the, uh, report on the fire department to come up with a million dollars in additional savings. So we have been working on that, we will do that. And, uh, I'd just like to say, um, to our, uh, to the council and to staff, we, we appreciate your indulgence and patience with us over the last couple of years. We've had a lot of significant challenges financially and I, I'm proud that the staff did, uh, step up and they were able to rise to the occasion and do the reductions that we had to do, including having a number of vacant positions. Uh, it, it has been challenging, but we got through it. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of the hard work and we know we're not out of the woods yet. We're, we're not close, but we're gonna keep working and do our best to, um, manage the public's assets effectively and maintain the service levels that the community expects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mittnick. Certainly, a twenty-three million dollar change in top-line revenue, uh, is something worth noting. And plugging a nine million dollar gap in a balancing a budget is a testament to your effort and the effort of Mr. Lilio. So thank you both. Uh, do I have consensus to receive and file? So it shall be written, so it shall be done. E, committees, commissions, reports, board presentations, there are none. Report, City Clerk?
None this evening.
City Treasurer? Hearing nothing. Councilmembers, item twelve, League of California Cities Annual Conference Report for September twenty-second through twenty-fourth. This will be another item to receive and file. Mr. Mittnick will report on this item.
Well, it's a joint report from the Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Prustick. Yeah, you two could do it, I can do some highlights for you. Since I was there with you, it's up, up to you. How would you like to handle?
Councilmember Drew?
Oh, I'm sorry. Drew was, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Drew was there.
I, I will leave it up to you to give the summary of all of the amazing things that you learned while you were there.
Um, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, again, there is, uh, this is, uh, in full compliance with the, uh, Ethics in Government A, B, one, two, three, four rules. When council members as elected officials go on conferences or trips, you are required to report back to the full council and the public. You have different ways you can do that. It's quite common in California for councils to do it in this format under council member, uh, comment. So we had two council members, I was, uh, miss- misspoke earlier. It was Councilmember Prustick and Councilmember Drew. You attended the conference and you had your city manager and your, and your, and your CFO, they were there. Right, did I get that right? There were four of us who were there. Uh, and it was a good conference this year. It was interesting, it was the first time the League of California Cities, now known as CalCities, had its annual conference in a while. I think the first time they've had a gathering up in Sacramento. It was also interesting how many, um, the, the whole, pretty much the state government is shut down and they're working from home. Normally we'd go up there, we'd visit with our assembly member or state senator or different departments up there. While we're there, we weren't able to do that. In fact, we were trying to meet with, uh, the Housing Community Development Staff to talk about the Surplus Land Act that you heard mentioned earlier, we could not do that. So very interesting, a lot of the restaurants and shops are shut down. Now, in any event, it was a good conference, there were a number of, um, topics, they're delineated in the report. We did attend sessions involving the new, uh, land use housing legislation, S B nine and S B ten. Very interesting, um, exchange there. We went to sessions on cannabis, homelessness and a variety of other topics as delineated in the report. If the two council members would like to add anything about their experience or to share with the rest of the council, it's your call and we're available for questions. Thank you.
No, it was just nice to, um, get, get out, get out to meet these, meet, meet the people from the cities. And there was representatives from, I think there was close to twelve hundred people there?
Uh, nineteen hundred, I think, I heard, yeah.
You know, we got to meet, uh, have, meet people from Monterey Park, from Manhattan Beach, Rancho Cucamonga, many places. So it was a really good, um, networking environment so that we could have some conversations about, um, how to handle S B nine and S B ten in our cities and, um, cannabis, so it was very productive.
Nothing further to add?
All right.
Consensus to receive and file? Shall be done. Ca- council reports, Councilmember Drew, nothing from me this evening. Councilmember Nickel?
I wanted to report back that we did host that El Segundo Citizen Hyperion Forum, uh, a couple Thursdays ago. It was very well-attended, there was forty-four members of the public there. And that's a record by thirty-nine. Uh, since I've been the liaison for it, the most we've ever had was three members of the, uh, public there. And typically that's Carl Jacobson being one of them, so I don't even know if you want to count him. But, uh, it was informative, it was good to have, I, I essentially read all the questions that were being asked in the sidebar of the Zoom because it was, it was held like a webinar, similar to what we do here where, you know, people can't just log in, people can't just speak, they can't raise their hands, can't get called on. So it was really handled through just a question and answer, which some people were upset. There was a little bit of confusion because the original link that was sent out was not sent out as a webinar link. Therefore, the link was changed within twenty-four hours of the meeting and that didn't get out to everyone. So then people had trouble logging in and then when they got the proper link, then they weren't allowed in because it was already in process. Uh, so I did get them to agree. So this is typically a quarterly gathering, the Citizen Forum. I asked them if they would please come back in one month's time. So there's another one scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-first. They typically are held at six P M. Um, Mr. Mittnick, uh, has already agreed that, you know, staff will push this information out, uh, via social media from our platform as well as if you get the emails from the city of El Segundo, you will get updated on this. I think it's important to understand what goes on over there and to be able to have your questions heard and answered in real time. Again, is it? It, is it the best forum? No, no, it is not. Uh, does it have a rudimentary structure that is followed and has been followed for many, many years? Yes, it does. Does that speak to handling everybody's individual reimbursement issues? No, it does not. Um, but what it does do is it gives you a glimpse into what is going on at the plant and maybe adds a little bit of, um, insight to the effects that we are experiencing. And so I do highly recommend anybody who has concerns or lives on the West Side and is, um, affected by the situation, I guess we could refer to it as, at the plant, uh, to log in on October twenty-first, um, and, you know, have your voice heard. And this Citizen Forum was created for us, the citizens, to be able to speak to representatives from the Hyperion on a regular basis. So here it is, we're gonna do it again in a month's time to get more updates on the normal operating procedures at the plant and, uh, construction updates, things like that. So October twenty-first, six P M, and the city of El Segundo will get that information out to all of you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Prustick?
Yes, so I just wanted to, um, let everyone know, this is homecoming week for El Segundo Unified, for El Segundo High School. The parade will be going down Main Street on Friday, I believe around three o'clock. Um, and there's gonna be the Homecoming Games and, um, we also have Richmond Street Fair. I'm surprised you forgot to mention that. Um, and that's gonna be on Main Street as well, so please come out, it's gonna be a fun weekend for El Segundo.
Is Councilmember Nickel still eligible to be in the Homecoming Court?
Uh, yes, I think he is.
City Attorney, can you weigh in on that? Do you have any, oh, that's a school, sorry, that's schools, schools. Mayor Boils, reports?
None this evening, thank you.
A few items here from the left of center. Uh, short-term rental program begins, uh, so that pilot program in the city, so please be weary if, or leary, excuse me, if you are renting your, uh, or doing home sharing, uh, that if you are not registering with the city, you will be contacted to do so. So I would urge people to make note that the pilot program for short-term rentals and home sharing begins. And I believe it's this weekend it starts or, okay. Um, also, oh, City Attorney, do you have a question on that?
No, I was just gonna, that home sharing, just the emphasis is on, you know, so that there's not confusion. It's not short-term rentals, most people understand it, it's.
My, home sharing, that's correct, you have to be in home. My mistake, home sharing program begins. Uh, calling attention once again to that October fourteenth meeting of Region Four for your Regional Water Board. People who are very unhappy with Hyperion and unhappy with us, if you have public comments, there's public comments available for that. And those are people who I assure you know a lot less about the situation than we do and Hyperion does. I would urge you to make yourself available for that. It's nine in the morning, so some people may not, but if you have the opportunity and the time to make known, uh, the distinct and acute effects of this disaster on our city, please do so. Uh, also LAX short or, uh, early turns, please make note of that highlight, the, the hotline. You can reach that on, uh, the city website. There have been a seeming spate of early turns, there may be a new crop of pilots, uh, that I'm not certain, but I know they're over my house all the time and I know my neighbors call me. I assure them that, uh, it's easier to call LAX directly or LAMA directly. And then I know that we get saturated by notes of new signings of laws by the governor. There are a lot that can directly impact the city of El Segundo. There will be a series of legislative briefs that we can receive through the call coming up. But people at home, if you have an opportunity to research what we talk about when we say S B nine and S B ten by way of, of example, uh, you could take a lot in my neighborhood and put four dwellings on it conceivably. Um, and it's, it, it's not so hard to do. That could radically change the way our city is structured, so if you have an interest in that, please do make that known. Uh, there will be several pieces of, um, information on, on that coming out. And City Attorney?
Briefly, and in response to a question that was brought up, uh, couns- by Councilmember Drew earlier, the County Health Department did address the issue today of when masks might go away and the response was there was no definitive date, it would be based upon, um, uh, increased vaccinations and, um, decreased hospitalization rates, but there were no actual specific metrics provided. And the quote at least I saw was that, you know, we can expect to wear a mask for a while to come. So that, just to provide you with, that's from the health.
So the data points they gave you are actually happening, right? Okay, I know, it's not your call, I'm just saying. I just like to point out hypocrisy as whenever I can, and that's just what I do. There are a number of allusions made to the increase we saw around Thanksgiving of last year. So if, if I were to take a puncher's chance, I would say that trying to weather the storm of weather, the change in climate, the change in weather drives more people inside and spikes infection rates seems to be informing some of the decisions, but that is conjecture. All right, City Manager? Oh, Councilmember Nickel, Homecoming King, here we go.
Sorry, I, I, I forgot something. Uh, the Richmond Street Fair this year, it is going to be hosted on Saturday, starting at nine A M. Come down, see all of your favorite vendors and it's actually being held on Main Street this year. Uh, we had to move from Richmond Street simply because, uh, the current outdoor dining situation on Richmond Street, we did not want to, uh, just cause extra work for the restaurants there. Uh, so we are on Main Street this year, there is more vendors than we've ever had. Uh, we will have everything from a petting zoo for the kids to the big blowups and lots of exciting, excitement happening there. We have clubs from the schools coming down to sell products, to try to raise money. We have a beer garden on the corner of Main and Grand in the fire department parking lot, where food's gonna be sold, beer's gonna be sold. Beer was donated kindly by the breweries in town, primarily El Segundo Brewing Company. Rob Croxwell and his staff have done a wonderful job, um, garnering support for this event through their relationships with the craft brewing community, so a big thank you goes out to them. And, uh, just come on down with the family, it's a great event. Uh, it's what I believe embodies what our community is truly all about. So the, the fair on Richmond Street this year on Main Street, no confusion, this Saturday, nine A M to five P M. Thank you.
It's the twenty twenty fair in twenty twenty-one for Richmond Street on Main Street. City Manager, your report?
I think I'm, I will receive a request to have directional signs on Richmond pointing them to Main Street for the weekend, so we'll, we'll get ahead of that. Um, all right, um, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, we're in the home stretch here, just about done. Uh, I'll make sure staff follows up to the various follow-up items that have been discussed tonight. Our next city council meeting will be two weeks from today, we'll have a three P M or three-thirty in the afternoon, study session on revenues that the CFO made reference to earlier. This has been a, a long time in the coming, so, or in the making. The regular council meeting, we have a number of items of interest. We'll have an update on the plunge project. City Council, you did ask for an update, so we will have that. We will also have a public hearing on the zoning process streamlining effort. That's been in the works for a while. I mentioned earlier the fire department budget follow-up, we will have a report and recommendation for you on that. Aquatic fees and an S B nine housing law update. Riveting topics, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mittnick. Time on deck is eight oh nine, we are adjourned.